Okay, good morning. And thank you all for coming out to this year's Meet the Candidate Forum for 2022 Castle Rock Town Council Election. Just want to introduce myself. My name is DJ Tedesco. I work at a independent financial, and I serve as the chairman of the G.I., or the Chambers Government Interest Committee, and also the Castle Rock Economic Development Council's Executive Committee. So first, I want to recognize and extend our appreciation to the Castle Rock Chamber of Commerce CEO Pam Riddler, Castle Rock Economic Development Council CEO Frank Gray, and Castle Rock Downtown Alliance Director Kevin Tilson. He's here for sponsoring this event. And then also, I want to thank Stephanie Fuji, who is the president of Arapo Community College, and her staff for allowing us to use the facility this morning. Before we start, I want to introduce and recognize public officials other than Karen Johnson and Kevin Bracken, who are the town council incumbents this year. Douglas County Commissioner Laura Thomas is with us, and Douglas County Assistant Lisa Frizzell is with us this morning. And just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anybody.
Mayor Gray.
He's coming up. He's coming up. And lastly, to recognize our mayor, Jason Gray, who also would be running this year, but he is not, the position, I should say, is running unopposed. So Mayor Gray, would you like to make a couple of comments?
Sure, thank you. So I really think this event is important. It was four years ago that I did this event, wearing the same shirt. And I mean, I remember it well. It was, for me, it was real nerve-wracking. I had already been in town quite some time, but I'd never run for office, and so I think it's an important event. I think it's a way to get to know our candidates. I wish we had maybe a couple more of these. Hopefully, in November, I'll get elected. And several, four more years for the town of Castle Rock. I really enjoy it. Hopefully, I can do a good job for you guys. And hopefully, our citizens' needs are being met, and our business needs are being met. It's just really important to me that we're doing that for our community. But it really is about these guys here, and meeting them. And whether they win, lose, or draw, it's really great that they're here and they're putting themselves out there. It's really important, and I thank you guys.
Thank you, and congratulations, and thank you for your service, and best wishes in your next term. Okay, overview of this year's election. As most of the audience knows, there are two vacant town council seats, and these include districts three and five. And like we said earlier, the town mayor position was up for election, but our mayor is running unopposed. So first, I want to start out by just explaining a little bit about the structure of the forum. This year, the audience, all of you and myself, will ask the candidates questions, and of course, I'll have the opportunity to provide responses. I just want to let the audience know that when you're asking the questions, please direct your questions to the entire candidate group, the candidate group from district three or five, and/or just to the new candidates or the incumbents. If you can remember all of that with your questions. And they might just be, I understand that they might just be to the entire slate that's up in front of us. The responses, at least initially, will be limited to two or three minutes. And Kara, in the background, she will let you know up here when you have 30 seconds remaining, okay? I just want to also note that, you know, this isn't necessarily a debate, but rather a forum for the candidates to inform all of us and respond to questions related to the town's growth, finances, employment, and other issues. And then lastly, as everybody can see, this event is being videotaped. And that tape, the recording, will be available on the Chambers website sometime next week. Okay, so let's introduce the candidates. From district three, and just so everyone knows, district three is located on the west side of I-25, sort of in the middle of the town, maybe on the north side, and includes portions of the Meadows, Castle Highlands, and Red Hawk Neighborhoods. And there are two candidates for district three. Incumbent and our mayor pro tem, Mr. Kevin Bracken, and also Mr. Dean Legatsky. And Mr. Legatsky wasn't able to attend this morning's forum. From district five, which is located in the southeast part of Castle Rock, includes the Castle Rock Ranch, or, excuse me, Castle Wood Ranch, and Founder's Neighborhoods. And there are three candidates for district five. We have our incumbent, Ms. Karen Johnson, Ms. Karen Ann Harlos, and Mr. Max Brooks. So before we begin, I just want to let all the candidates know how much we appreciate your desire and your willingness to run for office. We know especially now, in these days, that that is something that is not easy to do. So thank you very much to all of you. Okay, we'll begin by allowing each one of the candidates to make an opening statement. Within this statement, I'd like you to tell the audience a little bit about yourself, how long you lived in Castle Rock, what you like or dislike about Castle Rock, what your occupation or profession is, and skills and experience that you possess that would make you a good town council member. So we'll begin with Mr. Bracken.
Thank you, DJ. I appreciate everyone's time for coming out this morning and listening to us. I apologize for my tardiness. I did have some work calls this morning. I do have a day job, so actually flying out in a little bit. I'd like to talk a little bit about my attendance here. With my opponent not showing up, on his website, it actually states that he's going to be stepping up in a big way for the town of Castle Rock and being able to do this job. You know, I personally have never missed a single council meeting since I've been on town council. And to not show up to let the community hear your voice is very telling to me. You know, I've done this job for four years, and you know, I think that there's some things that have been said in the community about my candidacy and my right for town council. One being that my opponent is out in the community saying that I'm for dispensaries and in tax dollars for the town of Castle Rock, which, as everybody knows in this room, that Douglas County doesn't allow dispensaries, so it's really kind of a silly platform to be going door-to-door and out in the community making statements. Also, that the barn is going to convert into a high-rise and is up for sale, and that my opponent's going to stop that. I heard that one yesterday from friends in the community. So we are still a small town, folks. We are still a small town. And you cannot be out in the community spinning lies and being out in the community talking about the town of Castle Rock on a platform that doesn't exist, because it will come back, and I will call you out. I ran on a, I'm running on a record of four years. You can go back and watch the video. You can look at what I've said, what I've done, and what I've accomplished. And I'm not going to let somebody in the community go out and smear what I've done over the last four years. You want to ask me about it? Ask me about it. Don't ask my opponent. So that's why I'm here today, is to dispel the marketplace, to dispel the rumors, to be able to stand up for what I've done, what I'm going to do, and how I've been doing it. Thank you.
Okay, from district five. Ms. Karen Johnson.
Good morning, everyone. I am the current district five council member. I've been a resident of Castle Rock since 2005. I have a background in administration and mastery in geography and planning certification. And I've worked for local and state governments previously on profits. Volunteered in numerous capacities for the community as a commission member on Parks and Rec until I was termed out on that and then on the water commission prior to being elected in 2018 to council. And I served as a Girl Scout leader, a master gardener at local schools, at the Belfast Miller Library as a volunteer. And my last four years on council, I served Castle Rock with honesty, diligence, understanding, dedication, knowledge, and experience I've gained over the last four years as a council, beneficial to our community. I've proven my ability to be a successful leader. I want to continue to run, or run for another four years of running, because there were a number of items that I feel I would like to continue working on and effort. One of those is finding a way to bring in a reliable source of funding for our police and fire so that we don't need to rely on general fund dollars or sales tax revenue to fund our police and fire operations. So I think that's, it's a very important, very fiscally responsible way to provide that service to our community. And public safety, as we know, is very important, and we want to make sure that our community remains a safe place for families and all of our residents, our visitors, everybody who comes to Castle Rock to enjoy our open spaces and our parks and our businesses and our restaurants and all those. So I will work on that, so appreciate it.
Ms. Harlos.
Oh, you're going entirely out of order. I wasn't ready. Well, thank you, everyone, and I am super, super pleased to be here. My introduction might be a little bit different because I come from a different sort of background. And I'm going to start with something that might seem a little partisan, and the only reason I'm saying it is so you know my background, not to bring up partisan issues. But I'm the National Secretary for the Libertarian Party, so I have lots of political experience and lots of administrative experience. And I can tell you, when I started, I knew nothing. And now I'm one of the go-to people nationwide, even internationally, for the various Libertarian Parties throughout the world. I have a little bit of a different background, that I'm running mostly on principle. I can't tell you my answer on every single thing, because circumstances change. But I can tell you that I have the principles that this country was founded on. I believe that government should be small and you should be big, and that will always, always guide every single decision I make. But to give you a little background on me, see, I think you can always teach people policy, and you could teach them positions, but you can't teach integrity. And I'm not saying anyone here doesn't, because I don't believe in negative campaigning whatsoever. I can only speak to myself. But I have a proven track record of integrity. Last year, I was actually in the middle of somewhat of a controversy in the party because I exposed corruption. And I was one of the only few people to do it and became like on the international stage because of this. But it was a very character-building enterprise, and I will bring that same character and hard work to this job if I were elected. Also, just a little bit more on my background. I'm a paralegal. I think that helps having a legal background. I'm also a registered parliamentarian, which is a kind of an odd thing for people to have, but I know how to get things done in meetings, because I'm the one who knows Robert's Rules of Order. I read it for my morning daily devotionals. I wish I were joking. And I also have a background in historical preservation, which I know is something that's also important to the town. I've been, I took charge and ran the Libertarian Party Historical Preservation Committee since 2017, at which time I have chaired it. And just some other things on my notes here. Because I'm an elected person within a party, I know how to represent people. I know how to represent unruly people, if you know anything about Libertarians at all. In order to represent them, it can be somewhat difficult. I am confident that I can adequately represent you. One thing that I'll say that my reputation is, in my own circles, oh, thank you very much. I'm not going to keep going. I'll bring it up later. Is it Max next?
It's Max.
Oh, here you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harlos.
So I guess the advantage of being able to last is that I can play off a little bit of at least what my fellow candidates have said, because I'm absolutely willing to admit that I'm not a master gardener. I'm just like a very amateur gardener. But it's something I love. It's one of the things I love about Castle Rock as well. It's just, you know, the open space, the ability to be outside and have like bigger yards and a little less noise. I like the quiet. You know, we all want to have those things and hang on to those. I grew up in Colorado, grew up in Lakewood, moved to Castle Rock first in 2006. Immediately became involved with the town. I think it was 2008. Joined the Planning Commission, served on the Planning Commission for years. Then I moved over to what was at the time the Utilities Commission, which is now the Water Board. Served on the Water Board there, ended up as vice chair for the Water Board for a number of years. That was a really fun time to be involved, because that's when we had just put out to town the RFP to try to find our long-term water solutions provider. We ended up partnering with Denver Lies Water. I was just really, really proud to be a part of that, to help bring long-term water supply solutions to Castle Rock, which is really important, and being threatened again today with reductions in the Colorado River. So we need to go back to the drawing board on those. And then I served the Planning Commission again as chairman of the Planning Commission for a number of years. So that's how I'm going to play off of what you were saying a little bit about Robert's Rules of Border. Actually, I didn't wake up in the morning to read them.
Shame on you.
I know, but I did. I did read them quite often, because I was chairing those events. And then I was also vice chair of the Design Review Board. Those boards really are just, you know, those are educational tools, I always felt, for the residents of Castle Rock. It was a way of being able to go out and make sure that by the time that issue got to council, that we had the opportunity to educate. So the conversation at council would be very productive. So everybody that I had served with, and I have some testimonials on my website from people that I have served with, they talk about open dialogue and a good communicator, trying to ensure that when the public came out, that the public was heard. So even though I don't have national positions in parties or the experience right now from coming off of four years at council, these are experiences that I've had at the dais with various town boards and commissions that I plan to bring to Castle Rock.
Mr. Brooks, thank you. Okay, for the opening question, and this is sort of a continuation of probably your opening statements, and based on those statements or responses, the audience, you can ask questions, okay, of the candidates, like I had previously indicated. So we'll start with district five. Ms. Harlos, you get to be first off. And the question is, what do you consider to be the two most significant issues or priorities for the town of Castle Rock?
Okay, again, I will always go back to principles. Over four years, you don't know the issues we're going to face. I can tell you, one of the main motivating things that I, why I ran, so I do think this is a big issue, is that I don't think we could, should always be looking towards taxes. So I have made a campaign promise that I will never raise taxes. I think that's a big issue for here. And I also think that we need to look at trying to reduce some of the ones we have, such as the grocery tax, which hits people who can least afford it the most. So to me, the biggest issues that we have is keeping government in its place, and it will always be that. Now, I know there's issues with water. People are concerned about growth. I can tell you that I am a free-market person. I do not believe in a great deal of central planning, and I believe in government empowering people and then getting out of their way. And I didn't really see that last term, and that's what I think are always the biggest issues in government.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks.
You know, even though this is a, you know, it's a non-partisan post, right? But I've been talking with people as I go into the community, and everybody immediately says, you know, what are you standing for? How are you registered? Because there's nothing, honestly, that's non-partisan. Even when that's okay. So differences really between where Karen Harlos is with the Libertarian Party and the tenants of the Republican Party, there's some very similarities, a lot of similarities when it comes to tax structure. I will absolutely, to a point, echo what she was just saying about taxes. I was appalled, honestly, to see four tax measures go on our ballot a year ago. Four of them, asking for more money. That doesn't happen in Castle Rock. So I knew there had to be something that was a little off. You know, I understand, public safety, that's huge, 100%. Need to make sure that we have enough law enforcement on the streets, we have enough fire responders to be able to take care of our growing community. However, you got to stay out of our pockets to do that. These things need to be paid, have always historically been paid through retail sales tax. So we cannot be going to the residents of Castle Rock saying, hey, step up and give us more money. We need to be a little bit more creative about that and find the long-term solutions. This building tax that was put on the ballot, so short-sightedly dangerous. Absolutely. What happens when the last home is built in Castle Rock? What happens? So now we have $20,000 to $25,000 per home that we're not going to collect. Town's going to need to be able to make up for that shortfall. Now, I won't go as far as saying that we need to repeal grocery taxes. That's an economic engine of Castle Rock. That's where we differ a little bit. And then crime and safety. So taxes, crime and safety, because I already got my cue that the music's going to play during the second. You know, crime and safety is big. We need to make sure that we have the resources on the street. We need to be aggressive in how we're being able to recruit people. You can't just put up a sign saying we're hiring. We need to go out and have good compensation packages, good retirement packages for our personnel on that line.
Mr. Brooks, thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Yes, thank you. Being the incumbent, I would say that council, it's a balancing act, you might say. There's a lot of balance, and that needs to be done between the needs of the services the town provides and how our community enjoys their well-being in our town. So we need to balance the number of homes, the businesses, and keep green space, open space. So it's a balancing act that we need to have for our community to remain an inviting place for people to live their lives and work. And in order to do that, we need to provide the public safety. And again, like I said, funding for public safety, the operations aspects are paid for through sales tax revenue. And as we know, sales tax revenue gets augmented by economic downturns. Economic downturns mean that other projects in town get hit because we need to provide that public safety. We need to support our firefighters and our police officers. And capital projects get put out the wayside. And so finding a long-term solution to a stable revenue source for our police and firefighters is very important for our long-term security of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin.
Testing. Okay, yeah, so the issues facing Castle Rock, in my opinion, after doing this job for four years, you know, I think what people see, homelessness is a major issue around town. You know, as you may know, at least one of the county commissioners was vying for shelter and pods going in at the Justice Center area. And I certainly led the charge within town council to stop that effort. Also, you know, the Rock Church was planning on putting some pods on their land as well. I'm just here to tell you, I am not interested in rezoning any property for homelessness in the town of Castle Rock. It's not a good fit. Being compassionate, as council member Deets has been accusing me of not being compassionate, being compassionate is also being compassionate for residents of Castle Rock, protecting their property rights, protecting our kids, and keeping the homelessness out of our town in the way of shelters. And I will not be rezoning any property in the town of Castle Rock, period. And then growth, of course. You know, we just did a downzoning of 2,050 homes for the project out south, the Dawson Trails. You know, I'm willing and able to downzone any property if the property owners allow and they're willing to work with us, and that's part of the job, right? They have property rights, but also we can work with them to have less dense projects and be able to downzone any property. We just did it. So of course, police and fire. I think I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, any follow-up questions from the audience? Go ahead.
Good morning. This question is for all the candidates. I'm Kathleen Newbauer. I'm the director of sales at the Quality &amp; Suites that is going to, oh, sorry, be opening on Wolfensburger. So particularly on the Wolfensburger corridor, the media, as well as the local community, knows that homelessness is becoming an issue in our community. What do you all propose to be proactive and stop this before it grows?
Mr. Bracken, you're up first.
Well, thank you. I did not give you a softball question. Thank you very much. So yeah, so I've been working with the town lawyer. And so right-of-way issues, you know, if you're homeless and you're in a right-of-way, that is actually a freedom of speech issue. So they can't ask the folks to move along, so it turns into a safety issue. So addressing that with the legal aspect, you know, and asking the folks to move along from the legal aspect, because you can't go up to somebody and say, well, you have a sign that says, you know, you're asking for money, move along. That's not how it works. So working with the town attorney is really important, because the folks that are camping along our waterways, you know, they're essentially contaminating the Plum Creek. So getting that area designated, and here's the problem. I don't want to give the entire playbook, because what happens up in Denver is they hand lawyers, hand the homeless folks, a card, a business card. And what they say, if your rights are violated, and all our police have cameras on, which is a good thing, but if your rights are violated, we'll go out and get you a million bucks if they misstep and ask you to move along. So this is a very difficult issue to deal with, and this is a legal issue. In Fargo, North Dakota, it went to the Supreme Court, and it was cruel and unusual punishment to ask somebody to move along that's sheltering in place or that doesn't have a home to go to. So we have to define what that is as well. Also, I promoted with the police chief letter that the business owners can sign and have somebody remove from their property as a standing permission, because right now, what happens is the police have to contact the business owner, and they have to say, oh, yeah, this person's trespassing. And then they go back, they go back to the homeless person and then ask them to move along. So it is a long process that we're trying to supersede and make it faster. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bracken. Mr. Brooks.
You know, having some of the legal background there is helpful, because you know, there's no easy solution. There's certainly no easy solution to it. But I would like to see us work hand-in-hand with the county. Now, honestly, what I've seen from the county so far, you know, they're really interested, and I understand. They're really interested in making sure that there are, there's a PR face, that there's a compassion face to these things. You know, they're coming up with acronyms about how to be able to go and solve this issue. And that's great, but I will tell you that there is absolutely no way that I'm going to support, you know, some ideology that is just nothing but acronyms while sacrificing public. That's just, we need to do something. That's just, we need to do something. We don't have, I mean, being the county seat is great, right? I love being able to just go straight downtown and be able to get my passports taken care of. Being in the county seat bears some ugly responsibility as well, and that is some assumption that we have the resources to be able to handle this, and we don't. I mean, does anybody for a second think that we're talking about displaced families from Castle Rock? That's not what we're dealing with out there. These are folks from Denver and Aurora. We need to be working with Denver and Aurora who have the resources to be able to then deal with this long-term. Because setting up some tents and handing up cups of coffee, because we're trying to be compassionate, is not the long-term answer at all. We need to come up with maybe some very difficult solutions that involve making sure that they're going to places where we have the resources. And honestly, that's partnering with our folks out north and east with Denver and Aurora.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Yes, being on council, this issue has come up on a number of occasions. And just to give you some background, the town has their community response team or co-responders. And we do have a dedicated police officer who goes out to check on those who may be camping in our community. And as some have said, our hands are tied because we don't have any legal means to have them along. But they are checking on them, and they've found that by checking on them, people, those that are camping, tend to eventually leave because it becomes, you know, an issue for them. But they're being bothered. They came here to not be bothered. So they're being bothered, and I think that's been working for us in that way. And then, like, working with the county with their heart program, they are also having, sending out co-responders, so police officer and mental health personnel, who go and work with these individuals and seek to find support or get them in a program to get them back on their feet. And I think, you know, I think those programs are currently working fairly well, and I could see using those for our community. It has been working well and will work well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Harlos?
All right, I'm gonna have a little bit of a different response. And one thing I can always promise you, I'm gonna tell you what I think, whether I think it's going to be popular or get the nods or not. The fact is, these are human beings, and I'm not just saying that as a buzzword. One of the responsibilities of having a community, you know, we need roads, we need fire, we need police, but we also need to take care of human beings. And in proportion to our size, we should have services for people that are in need. It's just part of being a human, and we need to remember that. And I'm not saying that's not what's going now, but we gotta be careful with NIMBYism because if everybody has NIMBYism, other human beings really have nowhere to go, and but for the grace of God go I, and I always try to remember that. I have to say that I would disagree that I would be putting barriers in place for churches that want to help. If the Rock Church wants to help, God bless them. I think we need to enable charities and private organizations to step in because the cold face of government is not the best answer for people in need. I want to empower religious organizations and private organizations to help these people on a human level. But whatever the solution is, I will always see the image of God in these people and not view them as throwaway. And I'm sorry, that's just where my heart is, whether that's popular or not.
Ms. Harlos, thank you. Go ahead, you can clap. I have a quick follow-up question regarding this, and it's a quick answer. Given what four of you know about the homeless situation in Castle Rock, Douglas County, and the legality surrounding the homeless issue, would you be for or against establishing a shelter in Castle Rock? I'll begin with Kevin.
Thank you, DJ. Yeah, so we don't have public transportation in Castle Rock. So you, so here's what a shelter would do within the town of Castle Rock. It would attract more homelessness, and they would be stuck within our town, walking around, and to quote the police chief, that if you were to put a homeless shelter in the center, right next to the Justice Center, right by the county-owned property there, that is the network where the homeless would then have their trails, because we have trail connectivity, they would then, you know, be all over town. And again, we would only be attracting more homeless to our folks because all of the homeless that are long-term here have been contacted, all of them. And none of them have offered the services that we have available to them. They've been offered jobs, they've been offered vouchers, been offered education, they've been offered all these things, and none of them have taken that offer on. So we would be attracting more homeless to the town of Castle Rock, not in support of pods, not in support of a shelter, not in support of any homeless encampment within the town of Castle Rock.
Mr. Bracken, thank you. Mr. Brooks?
I'll keep it real brief. Absolutely not. I would absolutely not be in support of that, to the point that I would absolutely fight against it.
I'm not in support of homeless shelters in Castle Rock either, for the reasons, some of the reasons that have been stated, and those would be, we do not have the transportation. And our community is a welcoming community, but we, as being a welcoming community, that doesn't mean we necessarily need to set up a homeless shelter, so I would not be in support of that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Harlos?
Okay, to me, it's somewhat of a loaded question when you say "set up." Do, because it gets then, once again, into the proper purpose of government, which all of my questions will always go back to. I do think we should empower religious organizations to make provisions for these people. If that does mean on their property that they own, that they're going to take responsibility for having some sort of shelter, I would certainly consider that. I believe it is a community human responsibility in proportion to your size, not saying making it a homeless mecca, but in proportion to your side, to be your brother's keeper, that we have a responsibility to other human beings.
Thank you. Next question. Mr. Maken.
You, there we go. I'm John Maken. I'm a downtown business owner since 2007, and also have interest in the industrial sector as well with a business there. The town has approved residential entitlements, as shown in the current master plan, to be a community of around 140,000 residents. From the town's website, through the first quarter of 2022, 75% of the entitled residential properties have been built, and only 17% of entitled multifamily units have been built so far. So what challenges do you feel that the future town councils will face in fulfilling these entitlements?
Okay. Ms. Johnson? Your response, please.
The challenges have, we've been addressing that, we've been in that situation because that's, you know, we've had these entitlements since the 80s. So we do have the impact fees that the town has had in place. And while those pay for capital improvement projects, they do not fund our operations, the additional increase of operations needed for our town services, that police and fire, road improvements are, they're capital projects. However, many times, the monies need to be accumulated over a period of time in order to have enough to make the improvements. So I believe that what we're doing has been working, basically, but I, again, I go back to relying heavily or significantly on sales tax revenue in order to meet the gap in the funding needed for improvements in our police and fire. We need to find something that's a little more reliable, and I want to work with the council members and town staff on what that could potentially be. I don't have the answer for that, but I think it's something that does need to be addressed. And for our future, I believe, you know, we want a really good balance between, you know, the number of homes, which do those people generate the sales tax revenues that we use to run the town? We need businesses, they are where people go and sales tax revenues come from. And we also want to have our green space, our open space, to keep our well-being, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Harlos?
Okay, I have to say, I'm judging by the answers, I'm somewhat confused as to the question, but I'll try to answer what I believe your intent is. And when it comes to balancing those needs, I said this when I spoke with developers who were speaking with me. I do think that when we are building out, that all of those costs need to be borne by the development that's building out, that they need to pay for whatever additional burden that they're putting on there, and that's what the town council needs to ensure. But they don't need to be a profit center. You don't make money off new people coming here. You welcome them coming here, and they pay their share of whatever extra burden that they're going to put onto the community. But I'm a big believer in the free market provides. Government doesn't provide. The free market provides.
Ms. Harlos, thank you. Mr. Brooks?
Responsibility of council in this, know your lane, know what the rules are. The job is not absolute. You don't get up there and say, you know what, now that I'm on council, I decide that there's a certain vision for Castle Rock that I feel is important, that is not being, that I don't see out there. That's not the job. The job is to know your lane and know the rules. When it comes to property rights, it's pretty simple, they're absolute. You know, property rights are absolute. If there was land, Mr. Maken, that was entitled in 1987, good luck now in a court of law saying, well, we as a town decide that we don't want you to build there anymore. That's not how that works. Property rights are absolute. Now, we can and we do work with developers to ensure that there is green space. There's an open space code. I mean, you have to dedicate open space to Castle Rock. That's not something that council does. That's not something that council fights for. That's something that's already in the rules. That's something that's already in the lane that they should be staying in. There's going to be open space dedication. We're going to have connected parks and trails, and all of these things is just already part of what we do. Our responsibility on council is to know what the rules are, so that in that way, we're working with the development community to make those applications and to make everything as easy as possible, because we know that anything outside of that is beyond our scope. Now, we do have some levers, council does have levers, to be able to say, we want you to be able to fit into a specific design, you know, and conform to the design guidelines of Castle Rock. Absolutely, those need to be upheld. But other than that, you know, we don't, the responsibility of town council is to make sure that we're not getting the town into a court of law over property right violations.
Mr. Brooks, thank you. Mr. Bracken?
Sure, you want my opponent to answer the question? Okay. Well, so similar to what Max just said, so I'm not going to let my opponent make Castle Rock into Boulder. I'm not gonna put it in a moratorium on the town. It's not gonna happen, right? He's been saying he's gonna stop growth. I'm gonna tell a quick story since I'm in District 3. So in 1980, the Castle Rock Development Company bought the Meadows for $64 million. Okay? So they've made, we're in the building that they've sponsored, and they've made a great deal of money on the town of Castle Rock. But also, the town has put in connectivity and then also open space to the town. So the Castle Rock Development Company is now, you'll notice by the Wolfensburger Roundabout, that's the last piece that the Castle Rock Development Company is building out to. And how did we get the MAC? We got the MAC. All of the MAC was donated to the town from the Castle Rock Development Company, which folks don't understand that. And when you're talking about growth, paying for growth, and charging people to come here, the Dawson Trails has a mill levy on it. So if you buy a house in Dawson Trails, you pay, when you buy that home, for your roads on a mill levy that goes on your tax bill. That's how it works. No one's asking folks to write a check to move into Dawson Trails. That mill levy that the town puts on those dollars goes to the infrastructure to build out that road. So am I necessarily happy about the amount of homes that are going into Castle Rock? I'm not. But also, the developers have rights, and as Max stated, those rights are a potential lawsuit if we say no. So we have to work with them and massage those projects to be able to fit for the town. I offered, you can look it up, it's a similar topography and setbacks to property rights. It's on my website, Kevin Bracken, Castle Rock Town Council.
Mr. Bracken, thank you. Growth is a pretty big concern in Castle Rock, and I'd just like to ask the audience, if any of you have a follow-up question for the candidates relating to growth?
This question was for Dean, but maybe you could answer it.
I'd be happy to.
After I ask Dean's question.
I'll give you his answer all day long.
Thank you. Well, I was on, Dean came to the chamber, and when he came to the chamber, we asked about his positions, and he said he'd rather not talk about them because they might be used against him. So I don't really know his position, so I went to his website. And on his website, he had, one click was correcting past mistakes. Correcting past mistakes on his website, okay? And when he had correcting past mistakes, he said, some of the decisions that were made then are not appropriate for today. And he then talked about slowing the growth. So I wanted to let you respond to what your opponent said.
So I'm just making the assumption that the past mistakes, so when property was zoned in 1980, there's property rights. So I think what he's referring to perhaps is that past mistakes from 1980, I go out and buy a piece of property, and it's zoned for a single-family home. Dean, in my opinion, thinks that he can now say, I don't want that home to be built there because I'm the ruler, and I'm going to stop that home from going in. But if you have property rights, we, the town of Castle Rock, will be sued if we turn down the ability to build that. So I'm confused on what past mistakes may be, other than I think it was a mistake for past town council to zone almost the entire town of Castle Rock. I think that that was a mistake. How do you change that? I think Legatsky wants to be bolder, and he wants to put it in a moratorium, and nothing can be built within the town of Castle Rock. I think that's unrealistic. I don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's something that my opponent can do. And I mean, I'm plugging in assumptions into what he's doing and how he's doing it. So I won't go around the community and lie about what I can and can't do, but since he didn't show up, I decided to answer the question for him. Thank you.
Mr. Bracken, thank you. I have one question regarding growth, and it pertains to the recent growth and changes to Castle Rock's downtown area. So I'd just like each one of you to comment on whether or not you like or support what's happened to the downtown Castle Rock area.
It seems there's a common theme here, property rights, so I'm glad we're all in agreement of that. I hope we all mean the same thing by it. But property rights... But property rights are absolute. Some people don't know that the Declaration of Independence wasn't going to be life, liberty, and property, and it got changed to, to pursue your, pursue your happiness or the freedom to pursue your life. I like the changes in downtown Castle Rock. Some people don't. I think they're cute. I love going down there. And again, the market will put a natural cap on growth because we're a capitalist country and people want to make money, and when they're not making money anymore, it's in their best interest to have something that we're going to want to go to. I love the way it looks. I like the mix of, the mix of the new and the old. And like I said to someone in my own neighborhood when I was going out campaigning, when you talk about, well, I want to keep the old flavor, I said, you know, in 50 years, all these homes and founders will be considered historic. Everything's, hard to believe, but they will. So I like the mix of the old and the new, and what's going up new today, 50 years from now, people are going to be saying how quaint and adorable it is. I just want it to be well-built and enjoyable.
Thank you, Ms. Horos. Mr. Brooks.
So while I was on planning commission, I wanted to try to learn what other communities were doing. You know, what could we learn in Castle Rock from the successes and failures of other communities? And what I learned there, and I wanted to say that specifically because what I'm about to say is not about Castle Rock. There are two choices when it comes to a municipality, to a town. Not three, there are two. You are growing, you are dying. Make a choice. Which one do you want to be? I think the changes in downtown are amazing. I, I remember the Castle Rock that I moved into, we all do, right? It was, it was, it was a little bit more small-town feel, but I'm telling you, so you go out, you don't even have to do it on a Friday night. You go out on a Tuesday night and stand on the corner in front of like Great Divide or Union. You tell me, is it working? Absolutely, it's working. People are smiling, people are having fun, people are in that park, Festival Park is magnificent. See, families out there all the time. So are there people that are, that are enjoying Castle Rock? Are people coming to Castle Rock and spending their tax dollars with us? Hello, help me make this money? Yes. So I absolutely support the changes that I've seen in downtown Castle Rock. I believe that it has fit in. It's a little different, right? A five-story structure in downtown Castle Rock is a little different than what we're used to seeing. However, the building code allows for it. There's something called a downtown overlay district. The building code allows for it. If the building code allows for it, well, then the marketplace should feel free to build to that because they're only building it to capitalize on the desires of the community. You know, it's us that want it, otherwise they wouldn't build it.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, I will say that I have had a more difficult time with some of the changes downtown. My idea was the height, the changes aren't necessarily what it was. My issue is more the height of the buildings and the massing of the structures, which means the size. I was hoping for redevelopment that would better match existing historic buildings like B&amp;B and Castle Cafe. You know, I was thinking maybe four or five stories, not the seven and eight stories or six and seven stories that we have at some of our newer buildings downtown. And I was also looking for a little more historic architectural features in the newer structures that spoke to our historic buildings downtown. And those were the things that I was looking for. While these buildings have been built, I think they have been successful and are allowing or incentivizing or bringing other, the smaller redevelopment that's been coming to council and happening downtown, is happening and most likely is a result of these, the development that has recently happened. So I do strongly support the, the smaller redevelopment, small-scale redevelopment that's going on and encourage that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Bracken.
Thank you, DJ. So, so what was replaced with the buildings that are down there now? I think there was a massage parlor, there was a, two oil change places, and I'd like to beg a question for the, for the audience. Raise your hand if you've been to Great Divide or Tribe. I think that there's one person that's from out of town, perhaps. Raise your hand. So, so the answer to, the answer to that is the tax dollars and revenue that go to police and fire from those restaurants that are downtown are helping to build out our police and fire departments. And there's no question about it. It's not even arguable because our tax dollars support our police and fire. And the success of those buildings down there, there's no one, there's no one out in Crystal Valley that's bringing in tax dollars into, into our police and fire. There's not a business out there that's comparable. And so when you look at the success of our downtown, and imitation, imitation is the greatest compliment, the town of Parker is taking the model of the town of Castle Rock and they're trying to replicate it within their town. So I'll take that pat on the back all day long. We have 408 public parking spaces that were, that are, that are either has been or will be developed, built by developers and paid for by the project. That is successful downtown. You look around and you see people walking around downtown, I'm going to tell you right now, a successful downtown is walkability, and we have that now because the old dirty bar is gone. And success is in walking around and looking at what our downtown has become. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you. Okay. Next question for the audience.
So this is for everybody. With regard to growth and development, how is the town going to make sure that we've got an adequate water supply to keep up with that? And what are we doing to make sure we've got water in the future?
Kevin, response please.
So I think probably the largest thing, well, I'm on the, I'm on the Water Resource Committee, so you know, you've got the, you've got the right guy to ask. We are trying to source water rights and, and water rights for, for the front range is difficult. So there's senior water rights, and I never thought that I would, you know, know so much about water. But, so I mean, Mark Marlowe, our, the head of our water department, is trying to source water for the town of Castle Rock on a daily basis. I'll guarantee you that. And there's a full committee that is, is going out and trying to purchase those rights. It's probably our largest spend, it is our largest spend within the town. So the, what, what just got passed for, for new home development is restriction in Colorado-scape, restriction on lawns to be less than 500 square feet. And then the rest has to be Colorado-scape. So that means that less water for the homes. So again, property rights and entitlement, if you're going to, if you're going to put a new home in, you're welcome to do that, but you're going to use less water. For the folks that are here, that's a great value prop, and it's millions and millions of gallons that council just approved to be able to, to be able to have the current residents use. So that's one thing that, that's just happened. So if you're going to build a home here, the developer is going to have to put in the front yard and the backyard with restrictions, and it's going to save millions for, for the town moving forward. Because we spend, we, we water four times as much in the summertime than we do in the wintertime because everyone's watering their lawn. And it's a shame. I, I think the, the front yard should be full of fruits and vegetables and we should be eating, you know, eating, you know, I don't know whoever came up with grass out front of your lawn was a very, very thin value prop, in my opinion, and it's a waste. So anyways, that's, that's my water speech.
Mr. Bracken, thank you. Ms. Horos.
Finally, something that I actually do think is a legitimate function of government. It is a scarce common resource, and I think that should be one of the most important priorities that, that, that we're looking at. And I really appreciated Mr. Bracken's comment, being, you know, experienced in the, in the water board. As to what the exact answers are, I think devolving things down to water boards where people can spend most of their time looking at that issue is, is the answer. On things like that, sometimes there has to be restrictions because it's a common resource. But I would look for the types of parsing out that is fair and equitable to all and the people who are using more water are paying for it, if it is putting a burden, a burden on the town. But that is definitely something that needs to be community managed as a community resource.
Ms. Horos, thank you. Mr. Brooks.
I, I think we could all probably sit up here and talk for hours about water, I mean, how important it is, and, you know, we're looking at future diminished molecules from the Colorado River because those are being taken by neighboring states, California. You know, we certainly have to, we have to look at other, other ways of being able to do this. I think that to what Mr. Bracken said is very important as far as Mark Marlowe, he's the head of the water department. You know, this is about relationships. It's about, is Castle Rock a great community to work with? And that goes across everything, right? Is it the building community? Is it even trying to find water partners? You get a reputation for whether or not we're going to be a community that is going to be one that you want to work with. We need those relationships. Mark Marlowe needs to be able to go out and look for these relationships to be able to source water. Castle Rock had been doing a fantastic job with infrastructure, making investments in infrastructure, making investments in reservoirs to be able to store water. The water purification plants, Plum Creek Water Purification Plan came online while I was on the water board. These are, these were things that we were going in the right direction, and now we're being set back a little bit. And honestly, our community in Castlewood Ranch and founders, that wouldn't be built the way that it would, if it was built today, it wouldn't be built like that. It's like Scottsdale. I mean, there's so much turf up there, it is just absolutely ridiculous. And we worked hand in hand when I was on planning commission and water board both, with the age of ways to do voluntary reductions in the amount of turf there so that that way there wouldn't be as much water usage. So there are things like that that need to be done. But to answer your question, it's all about the relationships and making sure that we're going out there and looking for those long-term solutions from our providers.
Mr. Brooks, thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. As the council liaison to the Water Commission and the Alphinet on the Water Resources Committee, I'm very involved in the, our water needs and what the town has been doing to secure our water future. And the ordinances that we put in place recently that require Colorado-scape in the front and side yards and only 500 square feet of turf in the rear yards, I do believe, and that's for new homes. I do believe that is definitely a innovative, progressive way to ensure our water future. And as far as working with, or being on the Water Commission, I know our long-term ideas are to bring water from potentially South Platte. And even though some will make you believe there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be put in, there is some, but some of it already exists. And we have already been planning for that. The town has been planning to secure, because we do know we have these entitlements for, we've had these entitlements for a very long time. Based on those entitlements, our water department has been working to bring, make, ensure we have that water for all of our residents. And if we can, if we don't need some of that infrastructure, hopefully by reducing turf, we'll be able to save 50 to 60 million in the future for infrastructure needs. And so that, that, it benefits our rates, rate payers. And appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, I think we have time for one last question.
Mike has a question.
Mike, go ahead.
Okay. Well, thanks for being here, you guys. So business community, which is an amazing community, obviously provides the majority of the revenue that they cut, that helps the town survive. In fact, in the COVID years and in the last couple of years, we've had an increase in expected revenue outcome. And this inflationary, potentially recessionary environment that we're getting, we're going into, it's logical we expect a downturn from the business community. Some of you approached this. If you are looking for alternate ways to get money from, from the, right now, the business revenue environment, what would you say, okay, where am I, what, where am I going to go get that money? Some of them don't like tax, you know, how you get money to support the chief and the, both chiefs, the police and the fire, since that's a priority that all of you seem to have? Where is that money going to come from?
That is not your time or you have time.
Okay.
That's for everybody, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Bracken.
Thank you, DJ. So, so you have to understand how, to answer your question, Mr. McNairy, you have to understand how the town collects their money now, okay? So police and fire are supported by the tax revenue. So when you go to a downtown restaurant and, and you spend your money, the tax dollars that, that are, that are collected from that pay for the police and fire. So when the fire truck shows up at your house, you making a purchase in town of Castle Rock is how that gets paid. And now your property tax, your property tax is about $35 on average. Go ahead and look at your bill, get on the, get on the county assessor's page, Lisa Fazelle's in here. So get on the county page, the assessor's page, and look up what you paid to the town of Castle Rock for your property tax. If it's above $45, call me and I'll, I'll, I'll give you $100 because I'm going to guarantee you that it, that, because the most expensive town in town of Castle Rock pays $45. So when you look at your bill, what the town collects for, to be able to run from property tax for your home, we can run the town for about two months, okay? So we rely on sales tax dollars. So when you talk about projects like the Dawson Trails, the more retail that goes in there, the more dollars for police and fire, okay? So that, that's important to know. We are going to, to, to answer your real question. Your real question is, what are we going to do? We're going to chase, we're going to keep chasing our tail, and we have to put in more restaurants and more businesses to be able to add more police and fire, okay? But at some point, that's going to end. And to, to, not to, I'm not debating Karen and, but, but, but at some point, the town of Castle Rock is going to have to decide if they want to support police and fire in a more meaningful way, or do we want to just keep adding restaurants and businesses to the town to be able to pay for that? So there's going to have to be a decision made. It's not this, it's not this election season, but it's going to be in the future, and that's going to happen at some point because we can't keep expanding and building out to be able to pay for police and fire.
Mr. Bracken, thank you. Mr. Brooks.
All right, so we got kind of the, you know, the background of how the, the town makes money from the economic engine, which is great because it gives me an opportunity to kind of speak from, from that point forward to talk about like what happens in a downturn, right? When you don't have the retail tax. It's, it's about diversification. It's about ensuring that we're continuing to grow. Builders and developers are reacting to market demands. They're reacting to what we're asking for, right? And we need to make sure that we continue to work with that business community to increase the number of business driving, retail tax driving businesses. Yeah, I, we, I see everybody here from the EDC, Kevin Marcus, and Frank, and I'm pretty sure it's safe to say that Costco didn't just pick up the phone a couple of weeks ago and say, hey, you know, we want to, we, well, how about we come and contribute five to eight million dollars in retail tax per year to your community? It didn't happen. It goes with a lot of work. And, and the economic development, you know, that, that whole piece of it is working and we need to continue to support it and to go out and be able to find and incentivize at times, right, through, through very ingenious tax structures, which have been offered before, to be able to make sure we're bringing the right kind of business here that will generate that tax revenue, so it's diversified. So that way, the business communities we have right now, if there's a downturn, it's not born on just them. We're continuing to add to it so that that way we're able to diversify that tax revenue and, and the income that we can get there.
Mr. Brooks, thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll just reiterate again, I think I said it earlier. Yeah, I'll just reiterate again, I think I said it earlier, as far as the economic downturn and relying on sales tax dollars and businesses to support our police and fire and other services in town, I don't have the answer. We, when council did make some attempts to try to find what we thought was possibly a good reliable source of revenue for our police and fire. And I think we need to go back to the drawing table and take another look, evaluate additional options, you know, bring our collective heads together again and try to come up with another idea, additional one or two ideas to find that, some more reliable, stable source of revenue. And we do know that we do rely heavily on sales tax dollars in our businesses. We, I strongly support our businesses and our business community. And I believe that have been doing a great job in supplying, being able to supply our community the services they desire through the sales tax revenue. But I do have concerns when our sales tax dollars get hit in an economic downturn and we have to defer projects. So I would prefer not to have to do that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Horos.
First of all, I'm going to thank Karen for saying, I don't know. That's something you don't hear people in politics say enough because it's a fact, a lot of times you don't know. So I truly appreciate that. I prefer I don't know to, you know, just saying a bunch of stuff. But here's the thing, in an economic downturn, everyone's going to suffer, including the town. That's just reality. I would love to give you baskets of puppies, but that's just not going to happen. It's like saying, in an economic downturn, how are we going to eat filet mignon every night? Well, you're not. That's the answer. But there's a strange phenomenon in politics that sometimes lowering taxes brings in more. Because people in an economic downturn will travel to the next town over to spend their money if the taxes have stayed high in their own. And that could be a creative solution that we have, that sometimes more, less of amount brings in more money. But I don't think raising taxes and putting more burdens on business owners is ever the answer and I will always be a voice for business owners.
Thank you, Ms. Horos. We're probably going to go over just a hair. Do you have a follow-up question?
No, definitely.
You sure?
I just wanted to ask a question about the Town of Castle Rock. When it comes to, I was wondering how each of you, I was wondering what's your thoughts were on passing either a public indecency and or a public ludenits order that's our code?
Okay. Let's see. Ms. Johnson, would you go ahead and respond to that one first?
Thank you for that question. You know, I have to be honest. Again, I don't, I have not looked into this and I would need to do some research on this. I apologize. It was something I haven't had heard from our community, haven't really looked into. So I would need to take some time to take a look at what we have on the books that may apply and then get back with you. So I know you have an answer, but I'm not sure what we would, how we want to approach.
Do you want to clarify?
Yeah, so the Town of Castle Rock, so the Town of Castle Rock does have, I believe, a public ludenits and or indecency when it comes to businesses. It doesn't have it in general for the public, like Longtree and or Parker do, but they do apply it for businesses.
Again, I have to admit that I need to look into it. I, this is the first I'm hearing of it, so I don't believe I can answer you at this time, but I'd be happy to get back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Horos.
I just didn't think that was a problem. I mean, I also don't think we have laws about rhinoceruses running through town either. I mean, if it happens rarely, we can deal with it. I'm not about adding more laws to the books for something that might be a one-off thing. I think that's how government grows, like barnacles on a ship. So if there's some big problem with somebody streaking through town regularly, I suppose it would have to be something to deal with. But I have to tell you, in my time here, I haven't seen an issue. And oftentimes ludenities is in the eye of the beholder. I can tell you, there's some country they go to, they look at my ankles and go, whoo, those are some ankles you're showing there, lady. So I don't, I just don't see that as a problem with, I'll do respect.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks.
Pull up my socks.
Yeah, those ankles are tempting me.
Also, business owners taking notes too, like, oh, I shouldn't remember that there's, for businesses only. You know, I think this is, it's a good question to talk about how, you know, the process is supposed to work because again, I'm going to go back to something I talked about earlier about staying in your lane. You know, there's a process there for all of council. And the process would be something that if there's a problem, right, then it would be first either communicated from you directly to the police department and then that's brought up, you know, through Jack Colley, Chief of Police, to council, to then be able to say, hey, this is something we need to address. Or you go directly to your council person, you say, look, I'm having an issue with this. I think that we're a little bit short-sighted and not providing this. So then that way they can then take it to Jack Colley and say, look, I've had a resident come to me and say, we have a problem here. Let's find a way to be able to solve it for them. So it's just, I mean, it's a process because there are going to be things that we don't, you know, that council doesn't know is a problem. So we're going to rely on that communication piece.
Thank you. Mr. Bracken.
Thank you. I think perhaps maybe you're alluding to the homeless folks that are perhaps around our community. And I mean, there's, if somebody's urinating publicly, that's illegal. So I think that there's public indecency laws around the books, but, you know, so when, you know, when addressing the homeless and I'm no lawyer, but I've sat with the town lawyer for probably about six hours talking about what we can do for homelessness and moreover, what we can't do. And so, you know, if there's somebody that's exposing themselves or they're urinating or defecating around town, call the police because that's illegal. And, and so, you know, I mean, so I think that there's laws on the books already for those types of things, but you know, that's something that's already in place. Just call the police and allow them to handle it. And if you see somebody that's, you know, in our right of way, that's perhaps in a dangerous scenario, call the police and let them know that they shouldn't be there. That's my answer.
Mr. Bracken, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your questions. I think they were running close on time and now I would like to just give each one of the candidates sort of an opportunity for a final statement about their candidacy and their campaigns. So, Ms. Horos, would you begin?
Okay. If that really was about the no poopy in public, I'm all for no, no poopy in public. So I want to be on the record for that. But I thank you all for your time. And I am a person that has a heart for the little person and to be a voice for everybody and to be an advocate for people's rights. Rights are absolutely paramount to me. I've testified before the town council many times and what I've said is what I absolutely believe. Government is force. Be careful how you wield that force. Or as someone who's a good friend of mine says, you are the power, not me.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks.
I think you go back to just talking about communication and thanking everybody for coming out. Now, I don't have like some big grand campaign statement, but just kind of to wrap up the communication piece, making sure that everything's in open communication with constituents. But then also, what I've heard honestly that's broken, and this is not a representation of our current council member, all right? This is council period that I'm talking about. When I've had discussions with some investors in the town, people that are stakeholders in the town, they feel the communication piece is broken, that there's just a very stark lack of just the ability to have an open dialogue. There are some things that were happening with these tax measures that our partners knew nothing about. How do we not communicate that ahead of time that that would be impacting them? So I want to make sure that we're able to have an open dialogue and communicate effectively because I feel like that's really a piece right now that is a sore spot.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate all your time this morning. And I'll just reiterate what I support. I support police and fire in Castle Rock. And so our community remains a safe place to raise a family and that growth does pay for growth and reduces the burden on taxpayers. Securing a means to preserve more open space, development that retains Castle Rock's unique history and character, and responsible growth through balancing both community and development needs. So those are what I'll be working to continue. I believe those are the areas that I've focused on for my first four years and will continue to work on those if I'm re-elected. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bracken.
Thank you, DJ. So 90% of life is perhaps showing up. And, you know, since my opponent decided not to show up, I'll just let you know what I stand for. You know, and, you know, I'm here doing the job, been doing it for four years. And you can go back and look at my record, you can look at how I voted, you can look at my statements. I'm not short of opinions. If you don't know what I think, then you don't have an opportunity to change my mind. And Max, I have my number out on my website, I have it on my Facebook page, and people call me and I answer their calls. And I listen to even the folks that disagree with me. I call them back. I had a high school kid call me because I was an alternate on the Board of Health, had a high school kid call me about the vote for the mask mandate that I tried to get turned down for the high school kids. I called him back and he was joking around and he actually learned a lesson. Did he call a public official and they actually called him back? And he had an adult life lesson there. So I show up, I do my job. And if you want to hear what I'm about, somebody going door to door and making up things about what I stand for, call me, ask me. I'm here, I'm sitting here and I showed up. And so support my campaign. If you want to have a discussion, give me a call and go back and look at my record. Here I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bracken. I'd just like to follow up with what Mr. Bracken said and I believe that all of the candidates are probably, or are available to answer anybody's questions. It was a short time this morning, probably certain that some of you have additional questions, so I think that all of them can be reached. So this concludes this year's forum. And on behalf of Castle Rock residents, businesses and all of you as attendees, I want to thank the candidates. Again, we appreciate their willingness to become involved and to make a difference for the Town of Castle Rock. So give a round of applause for our panel. Again, quickly, want to thank Rappahoe Community College for the use of this facility. And again, to Pam at the Chamber, Frank at the EDC and Kevin Tilson, Castle Rock Downtown Alliance for sponsoring this event. And then I'd just like to say thank you for attending. I'll tell you what, I've been here a long time and those who make an effort to become more informed make for a better government. So thank you very much. Have a good day.